And please note attendance Denise. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing tonight, I'd like to open a public hearing on, to gain, to see if there's any public comment on our findings of fact for a couple exemptions from competitive bidding that were, that were placed, excuse me, are on the agenda tonight. And we're gonna handle these one by one. The first one, public comment on findings of fact for exemption from competitive bidding for the use of construction manager, general contractor, for the seismic rehabilitation project at Scotts Mills School. Would anyone care to comment on this particular findings of fact? Okay, the second one, public comment on findings of fact for exemption from competitive bidding for the use of construction manager, general contractor, for the seismic rehabilitation project at Butte Creek School. Would anyone like to comment on this one tonight? Okay. Seeing, seeing that, we'll close, close the public hearing. Move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
A move for approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we had one thing added to our consent agenda today, and we just found out about this today. Our Director of Special Services Linda Brown is, is resigning from Silver Falls School District to take a position with ODE. She's well qualified for that. It'll be a good move for her, but Linda, we're gonna miss you, and we wanna say thank you for your many years, nine years? Nine years of dedicated service to this school district. I mean Linda has, puts in hours way above what, what she's required to, and she has built that, that program, you know, into something that we can, we're really proud of in this district. So Linda, thank you. Let's give her a round of applause. And I'm glad you're gonna be going over and straightening them out at ODE. Okay, student reps, Courtney and Carmen.
Hi.
How are you guys tonight?
Good.
Good.
How are you?
Fine.
Okay, so ASB recently completed their bottom month fundraiser for the Tree of Giving. The grand total raised was forty-one hundred dollars, which provided over seventy-five kids with Christmas gifts this year. And the next fundraiser in the works is the annual Mr. S.H.S. pageant, which raises money for Metal Teams International.
FFA has been at Waco all weekend working on their annual chapter Christmas tree sales. Also in recent competitions, they had a few competitors and Creed speaking with one moving on to sectionals. FFA had their Christmas party last weekend and are looking forward to a great rest of the year.
The She Is Safe Club is currently putting on a blanket drive to donate to women at the Center for Hope and Safety. People can donate new or gently-used blankets of any size. Their hope is to make these girls' days a little better. The drive will conclude this Friday, and their goal is to get at least one hundred, one hundred blankets.
Our swim team is currently practicing recruiting and getting themselves ready to have an awesome season full of success.
The girls' basketball team is four and zero right now and is currently first in state and are just in their preseason games. Their next home game is a doubleheader tomorrow at 5:30.
Boys' basketball is currently one and one. They had a double, they have a doubleheader tomorrow night as well after the girls' game.
Wrestling had a tournament at Silverton High School last Friday where they had beat every team except McNary. Austin Reed, Jacob Whitehead, Valentine Garcia, and Braden Simpson all went undefeated. Their next tournament is this Saturday at Liberty High School. And that is all we have this month.
Okay. Any questions for these guys tonight? Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Have a good Christmas.
You too.
Okay, we're gonna move on to audience with visitors. Like I said, glad to see everyone here tonight. If you'd like to address the board, please be certain to sign in before you present. In order to ensure equity amongst speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will spend the time, or extend the time for remarks to five minutes. A second audience with visitors will occur later in the agenda specific to discussion and action items at this meeting. Would anyone like to address the board? Okay. Jean? Not yet.
Can I stand up in the front if that's good enough? Good evening, everyone. The, so I've, I've got a couple of points you did receive from me today, an email reminder of, I think we're heading into problems with the budget for Slater.
Jean, I didn't get that forwarded to everybody till about an hour ago, so they may not have seen it yet.
I did.
Yeah.
The standard communication is, I don't know, twelve pages long. It's one you received before, and some of you may not have, to remind us that we have a lot of problems there that we're not taking care of. I've heard what the architects, newer figures are. They're still way off base. We're not covering the seismic problems. We're not covering the, the sprinkling problems. We're leaving a whole bunch of stuff up in the air for hope that something's gonna happen, but we oughta really dig in and, and find a solution. If we're not gonna Eugene, do Eugene Field School, we could look at building a new school up there by Robert Frost. We should be doing that. Right now, we're entertaining the idea to go into Slater, which has all kinds of problems, as you know by the reports you've received. And we're going into Mark Twain, which also has been publicized with problems. We've got big seismic issues in both cases. The other issue, you have a public hearing tonight, and I guess we talk at, at the time that you have it regarding the, the bidding process for the two seismic projects?
We already, yeah, we already had that.
We had it already?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and I may be already voted, but the, the issue is something that is troubling to me. When we had the second phase of the high school, we had a figure that the, that the architect came up with with forty-seven point five million. It was consulted by the, the district's own consultant to use a figure of thirty-three million. I said thirty-two million. And instead, we set the figure at forty-eight million, whatever it was. And I said, you're gonna spend it all, and that's exactly what happened. The, the district's even own project manager had a hard time finding places to spend the money. If you do this on these small projects, the same thing's going to happen. There's no reason why on these small units of, of design that it can't be scoped out very well. You get a lot of favorable bids, save some money, and we should not be misappropriating it and spending it elsewhere. I've heard this group say, well, we'll find someplace to spend it if, if there's more money there, and we shouldn't. We should be returning it to the state where we got the funding from in the first place, and we should all be being fiscally responsible. So I'm trying to encourage not just you, but other organizations in the same manner. We should be trying to save money rather than spending money liberally like we did on the second phase of high school.
Okay, questions for Jean? Okay, thank you. No, go ahead, Erin.
Just one question, and I appreciate your input, Jean, on the, on your idea of building a new school by Robert Frost. In your, in your idea, how, how would you do that, given the fact that we've had, we don't have a bond to build a school? It's gonna take more than a few million dollars to build a school. What, what is your suggestion on how we could do that if we didn't have a bond, though? That's, I don't think it's fiscally feasible for us to do that.
Well, you know, in the process, Erin, that I was very much pushing for Eugene Field School, but in the end, I actually came and presented that we should be considering a new school up at Robert Frost. That had been proposed, you know, you're, you're young enough, you wouldn't even have heard about it, but in the early eighties, in the mid-eighties, that was what we were going to do. That was the decided method. It was, the teachers knew about it, administrators knew about it, and that's been forgotten. It was to consolidate so we could have things in one easy location, have it so it's easier on the teachers, easier on the parents, et cetera. We still have that ability to do so, and maybe it could be for twelve million or so. But we do need to have a bond to do it. We can't do this thing where we're trying to, well, we'll get some money from the bank and we can do this without people making a vote. People would've made a vote on that. They, they didn't know when to spend thirty-seven million or twenty-five million, but if it was something legitimate and being done fiscally responsible and a good thing for the students, we would've had a bond election. You should go back to that, rather than this very thing that we're trying to avoid in nineteen ninety-three, the reason we had a committee to decide if we're gonna have the new school location. I was the chairman of the committee, and we said to do that because we were talking about putting modules up. We felt it was an extreme waste of, of money and fiscally irresponsible. Now we're back to that same point, how many years later?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Don?
I'm Don Brown. I'm Linda's husband.
Don, please sign in.
I'm Don Brown. I'm Linda's husband, and I just wanted to say a few things on behalf of Linda. This was a really a rough decision for us this year, for her to decide to, to leave the district, and she really appreciates the nine years she's had with the district. And I know that as she looks back on it, and she just has a lot of respect for you as a, as an organization, and for the teachers, and for the peers, and for the students and their parents. And I know she wouldn't say that herself, but I'm, I'm just saying it on her behalf. And, and you know, we just really appreciate what you've been able to offer us in her employment here, and I know she's really looking forward to going to ODE. And I would just say, as you consider the new position, just like you said, Tim, it's not a forty-hour-per-week position. She puts in a lot of hours. I can attest to sixty to eighty hours a week, and that's easy, sixty to eighty hours a week. So as you consider that position, you really need to consider, you know, that, that piece of it, because it's a lot of work for one individual in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. First one, proposed revisions to policy EFA local wellness program. This is the first reading on this one? Did anybody have anything?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it here, but I did have one question on it. Talks about school lunches and the nutrition program. How's that apply to Parents Club providing lunches to some more smaller schools? Do they have to follow the same guidelines? Or can they kinda do their own thing like they always have?
Our, our schools that are not designated sites for the National Food Lunch Program are, are not named mandated by the same rules. We provide milk for, for those students, so our milk has to meet the nutrition guidelines, but, but not the meals.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on this one tonight? Can I say this is just the first reading? We'll have two more before we pass this, so. Okay. Next thing, Eugene Field School declaration is no longer required for school purposes effective December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. There was a resolution in our packet about this. This is an action item tonight, discussion. I think it's time personally. I think we need to put the building on the market and get, try to get some money out of it and use that money for other purposes, so.
Yeah, I was actually hoping we could do it a little bit earlier, but I understand why, why that date was chosen. But this is really, hopefully be a good thing for the district. We'll, we'll get some tax revenue back on the books and, and make this most likely a commercial property again and, and get this, the maintenance issues of building off, off of our books. I agree, Wally. I, I'm, you know, I think the sooner the better with getting Eugene Field on the market for, for purchase. I, I think I'd just like to see, is there any way we could, I know we're putting it as December thirty-first, but do we have the option to, you know, if we have a buyer, to pull that in? I just don't want our designation kind of, you know, declaration superseding a potential buyer if one comes sooner than December thirty-first.
Yes.
Oh, great.
You do. I mean, it's up to this board. If you have a sale, a seller or buyer, or buyer on the market and that buyer says, we want acquisition by October fifteenth, I'm, you know, without knowing any kind of details at this point in time, you can surely make the decision different than December thirty-first.
And if that's possible, I think, you know, as we list it, we make sure that that's known, you know, that we could be out of there before then.
Okay.
Yeah, should we, I'm, I'm gonna just offer another opinion. I mean, just, we haven't even opened the walls at yet Slater, and I'm not trying to poo-poo, to, I, I don't wanna vote, you know, root for something to go wrong at Slater by, by all means, but if they're, if you open up the walls and you find something that you don't realize and it's gonna cost more, are we gonna hamstring? And I mean, we made the decision to get out of Eugene Field at the end of, at our timeline, and I certainly wanna hope that we stick to that timeline, but if there's some unknown unknown up there at Slater, I mean, should we maybe just wait until the project is kind of on the home stretch, or we're rounding second, and the walls have been opened up, and there's nothing unforeseen in there that, that might slow us down? And that's, I, I think we should just wait till maybe that, that point is reached. You know, just to, 'cause, you know, it's an old building.
I think by the same, correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, but I think by the same token, we could act, we could delay that as well if we came, ran into something, just, just as we talked about pulling it in.
I, I mean, yes, you, you take action based upon the information that you have at the time to make the most informed decision as a board, and this is the information you have at this point. I, I understand Tom's concern, and you as a board, I think, need to wrestle with, with that input. The, all indicators are at this point, including with hazardous materials, surveys, and, and other assessments that we've done of the building, and really quite a bit of evaluation we've done over the last couple of years, that while we will likely find some unknown things, I, I don't anticipate anything that will cause a disruption to this project. With that said, three months from now, sure, Tom, if something were to happen, you as a board could revisit this topic and take different actions.
So, so could we, you know, I, I guess, I, I think that's what Wally was kinda asking, can we reel it back in if we, for some reason, can we change that date, just like bringing it in earlier? Can we move it later?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, a, a resolution is, is action taken at this point in time based upon what you as a board, again, believe is the most appropriate addition, uh, decision based upon the information that you have right now. If new information comes, if the project goes, you know, just goes through the roof.
Something goes crazy, yeah.
Sure, and, and that was our best option, and for you to make the most informed decision at that point in time, then you could revisit this decision.
Okay.
Seems like there's enough runway that we've got slush time to make that yay and a decision either to pull it in or to, or to let it go.
Yes.
Longer, so I, I think we're gonna know once we start turning on the walls, especially this summer.
We're not gonna tie our hands.
Right.
You know, this, this allows us also just to put the, to put the place on the market and start, start marketing it, because, you know, it might take, it will likely take a while to sell a building like that.
Yes.
So this just opens the door for us to declare that we're not, we're not gonna use this at some point down the road, and we can start putting it on the market and moving ahead, that phase of it at least.
And just, just as a matter of information, Tom, if, if you know, we've, we've sold a few properties in the last five or six years, I'll keep you well informed of information that we receive, especially offers and so forth, to make certain that you're, you're completely aware and, and remain informed of any kind of action potentially for this.
Good, no, I'm, I'm reassured we're not. I just wanna make sure we weren't tying our hands inadvertently, so, good, we're good. I'm good anyway.
Okay. Anything else on this? Okay, action item later tonight. Moving on, Slater Campus name when used as a middle school. We've had some public input on this. We've had surveys from the staff. We've had some discussions amongst ourselves. This is something that we're gonna, our goal is to decide this tonight, but in our discussion we'll determine that. But anyway, thoughts?
It was a, you know, I opening a report when Dandy was able to share with us kind of the details that go into naming something after, a building after some individual, whether it be deceased or alive, that, that there's so much, being for a lot of money. So it was very helpful, I think, to have Dandy's report as well to, to help us understand what we're getting into when we name after somebody. There's a lot of complications either way. You know, there's a few that we can go after. I know the Helen Keller name was pretty widely, you know, by the foundation, if you believe you checked into, was, would be no cost to us, basically. But beyond that, some of the others would get into being costly matters, which we don't really wanna spend money on that.
No.
So.
I personally still like Silverton Middle School. I, I think it's, to me, it's clean, it's, you don't step on anybody's toes, you know, I just, that's, that's what I prefer, even after all the input we've heard.
Well, it's simple and it's not confusing. I brought up a meeting or two ago that when you go out, out of town to, to sports events and, and you don't know where the school is, it gets kinda hard, and you call it Silverton Middle School, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Other thoughts?
I, I like Silverton Middle School just because it's, you know, I, I think it's gonna be the most cost-efficient route, route for us to go, especially where we're gonna have some older ones, so I think it'll be a little bit, can help.
We can keep mascots similar and colors even similar.
Yeah, I, I mean, the staff said that they were kind of leaning towards keeping the Vikings anyway, so, you know, I think that would be.
Okay, so not keep, not keep any in line with high school is what you're saying?
Yeah, in fact, they were wondering about, the, when we got the, the results of that survey from Aaron Wello from the staff, they were wondering about the, about making it the Foxes, because that's the high school, and, you know, there'd be confusion there for one thing, and also some of their points, and I totally agree, is, you know, getting to high school is kind of a rite of passage. And I think to make the middle school also the Foxes would be, it just doesn't feel right to me. It just doesn't seem right. And we have all our, you know, we have all our other schools out of town that have their names, and then they go to, to the high school, and they're the Foxes.
That's true.
And even in our, even in our district video that came out just recently, you know, I'm a bobcat and I can't wait to be a fox. I'm a Viking and I can't wait to be a fox.
Point.
And I just really think that the Foxes name should be reserved for the high school and that, you know, those kids making that step into the, into the high school. That's my opinion. That was kind of the opinion of the staff, from what I remember, from what Aaron wrote, and that's.
That makes sense.
Makes sense to me also.
On the other hand, if we keep Foxes at the middle school, that might be less painting, you know, the multipurpose rooms, that's already set up kind of for the Foxes. You know, some of the uniforms from the high school could be, you know, handed down or whatever in the middle school, that sort of thing, so, you know, I think both are decent possibilities.
Yeah.
I think we could have a discussion about colors. I, I agree with him on the, on the mascot, that maybe we could talk about the colors to avoid some of that painting, and, I don't know. I haven't thought about it, actually.
Is the multipurpose room painted fox orange and black, or? I don't think it is. I think the only thing would be the fox in the gym, or is that even still there? Is the fox in the gym still there?
Still there. I, I think, I think, Todd, you may be referring to the mural that was on the work, the wall of the multipurpose room. That's been moved to the district office.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So the only thing is the fox at the.
Just the gym.
Could just put a Viking hat on the fox.
You can get one of those big wall stickers.
Yeah, yeah. No, that could be, and that could be, that does, it's something that doesn't, wouldn't have to be dealt with immediately either, you know?
It's, I, I mean, I can speak, I don't wanna speak for everybody, but I appreciate the input and the time that, you know, the, the staff and the students and Aaron Wello helped kind of get a lot of the input in, you know, a lot of them came up with literary names and public figures, that kind of thing, so. They did a good job on, on kind of taking a poll and polls of the students and staff, so I, I just wanna make it known that I appreciate what, that they did to try to help us come up with some names, so.
So is there a possibility we could, you know, we'll vote on the name and then just leave it up to them to pick their mascot type of thing?
Yeah, I think that we could do that, too. We don't need to.
That way they feel like they have some say.
We don't need to pick the mascot at all. And I think in, in the earlier surveys, the, from the staff even, the split between naming it after like a literary figure and just naming it Silverton Middle School was about fifty-fifty.
Yep.
So.
Well, the, the number one, as we heard back, was, you know, J.R.L. Tolkien Middle School, you know, and that, that gets messy again in dollars and cents, and again, you know, that's, or J.K. Rowling.
J.K.
Rowling, sorry, was, was the first one which gets extremely complicated. Again. In many ways. And again, not being in favor of naming out for somebody still writing their destiny, so to speak, and legacy, you know, challenge, so.
Yeah. But Todd, that, that might be a good way to go, is, you know, pick a name and let them decide, staff and students decide the mascot, too, so. I think that's what we kinda talked about originally anyway, so. Anything else on this? Okay, other items? Any other discussion items? Okay, administrative staff reports, Andy. Slater Campus progress update, crisis response and threat prevention practices.
I'm actually going to go from the end of my agenda items to the front. I placed in front of you a hard copy, and I couldn't recall if I sent an electronic copy to each one of you, but this was sent out, the threat prevention, response and threat prevention practices document was sent out in an email, email blast a couple of weeks ago, and was actually revised following a couple of meetings, administrator meetings, to, I think, really focus on the, the fact that our district is full of a, of systems approach to practices to best address threats. When, when you think of, when, when people occasionally respond, or often, I should say, respond to what are schools doing to prevent threats and violence and so forth, a lot of times, I think the public goes very quickly to things like everything from armed staff, or even police officers on campus, or, or metal detector machines, or whatever it is. But the fact is, I think effective schools and school districts really use a host of practices in order to do everything possible to keep students, staff, visitors as safe as possible. So that document does just that. It puts into a summary form, and it's not exhaustive, but it does highlight the majority of practices, I think, that are occurring across this district to help not only address what may be some internal threats, but even potentially external threats that come from out of the schools within. It's also intended to, in, in addition to educating the public, it's intended to seek input. And when we sent this out in an email blast, we received probably half a dozen, maybe seven emails from community members who were very appreciative of the fact that we were asking, and they provided some very good input. Couple, a couple of emails were actually from substitute teachers who brought us some very good information about how we can improve our, our training as well as their awareness of safety and threat prevention practices in the school. So I share it with you, again, one more time, and with the public seeking input, and you're welcome to provide any input this evening yourselves, if you like, or, or you can contact me after, send me an email.
Can you give us some examples of what you learned from some of these substitute teachers, what they suggested?
And one substitute teacher who did not, could not locate the emergency procedures in every classroom that he, he taught in. Another substitute teacher had been in a neighboring school district where fully electronic door perimeter systems were, were in place, which was part of the first bond and partially part of the second bond. Those are quite expensive, and so those were the two questions specific from the substitutes. And we're, we're addressing the first one. Unfortunately, we can't address the second.
Thank you.
Any questions on this for Andy?
Andy, something I had that not really pertain to this totally, but sometime before I got on the board, somebody had asked, and there was a discussion about concealed carry of parents on the school grounds, and everything I've seen, we're not gun-free campuses, so is that still, I realize staff can't, but parents are still allowed to carry if they have a concealed carry permit on school grounds?
You, you have a policy which restricts employees and volunteers from carrying concealed weapons on campus.
Okay.
Okay, Andy. Slater Campus update.
Yeah, and I actually have some notes here that I'm gonna refer to. The, the seven of you will recognize some of this because it's much of the same information that I shared with you two weeks ago during your work session. So I think it's, it's important information, and again, I think, as you have discussed, and we've all discussed, the importance of keeping the public and you updated on the Slater Campus. And so some of it is new. The construction documents were submitted to the city of Silverton today, and a request for bids were published in the Daily Journal of Commerce today for contractor for the project. They're also placed on the district website. The bids are due on January fourteenth, and I, ideally would've been nice to have a contract for your consideration for your January eleventh meeting. That won't be possible, so I, I do anticipate you having a contract, proposed contractor for your January twenty-fifth work session, and I know you typically don't take action at work sessions. Occasionally you do, as long as there's sufficient notification given, and so I'm letting you know tonight, you'll have a contract for your January twenty-fifth work session. And so I'm letting you know, tonight, you'll have a contract for your January twenty-fifth work session. As we discussed at the last meeting, the estimates are indicating that this project could be higher than what we've estimated, or excuse me, than what we've budgeted for this project. The estimates at this point, based upon the architect information, are between two hundred and fifty and four hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher. Those figures haven't changed since the last time we spoke. Some additional changes to the construction documents have occurred to help address some of those. However, I do think it's important to note, and we talked, spoke about this last time, that, a couple of things. Number one, we've spoken about the uniqueness of this project and the fact that we've been squeezing the dime pretty tight, and we'll continue to squeeze the dime pretty tight. We value engineered a number of things out of this project in order to get to this point. At the same time, we also know that really the, all bets are off until, until the bids come in. And I can't say that our estimators are off base, but I also know that many times the competition for a project like this really does bring some interesting perspectives. And I have experienced, and I know Joel Smallwood have as well, circumstances where, you know, we believe the estimates were going to be higher and then they came in lower, in some cases significantly lower. So I, I don't know if that's going to occur, but bottom line for me, you need to know, and the public needs to be aware, that estimates at this point indicate that the cost for this project could be higher, once, once everything is said and done. So it's not reasonable, nor is it fair, to, to have information like that without coming up with some contingency plan or options for resolution for something like this. So I do have a number of items that, that we explained to you at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I've added to this list since then. And I believe that, I believe this, this is very much a manageable project, even with the cost overruns, considering the following. First of all, we are, will be using E-Rate reimbursement for about forty-four thousand dollars of the technology installation at the, at the Schleter Campus. The Schleter is essentially the next candidate available for that, and we'll be able to get reimbursed, like I said, forty-four thousand dollars. We estimate forty-four thousand dollars for that. E-Rate, by the way, is a federal reimbursement legislation that allows schools to tap into those dollars every year, and we have for multiple years and will in this case. We also have approximately, or anticipate that the cost for the gym light installation will be around thirty thousand dollars. That thirty thousand dollars, or excuse me, that, that project, the gym light installation qualifies for what's called seven bill, I said it bill eleven forty-nine dollars. That's your public purpose tax credit that all public schools obtain from their public utilities in, in, within their school district or revenue from customers. That'll be around thirty thousand dollars, and we will be using the eleven forty-nine dollars for that purpose. Well, with that said, we just, Linda Myers and I met with our district grant writer today, and since coming on board a few months ago, our district grant writer has focused exclusively on facilities for this district. While we haven't secured any funding yet, I think it's really pretty important to say that there are multiple grant applications that have been submitted, and multiple grant applications that will be submitted between now and around the middle of March, and they sound very promising. So I can't give you any more optimism than that, but this person has extensive experience and qualifying for these grants, which would help offset some of these costs as well. There's, there's a consideration that I didn't mention to you last time, and it's one actually that I just thought of a couple of weeks ago, but the, the state of Oregon allows you to cap out, or excuse me, to, to increase up to a certain cap rate, the amount of, of, that you can charge anyone constructing new homes in your area for your construction excise tax. You currently charge a dollar per square foot for all residential construction, new construction in, in your, in the school district. I believe the current rate is a dollar eighteen. You haven't revisited your construction excise tax rate for, for about seven or eight years. It may be time to revisit that, and when you do the math related to eighteen cents per thousand, or excuse me, eighteen cents per square foot constructed in this district, then we're talking about some significant change that could be added to this project as well, as far as revenue is concerned. You still have a remaining balance in your capital projects fund. That balance was estimated to be around one point one million, and that, and that fund is, still, we're keeping to that balance in, in that fund. And so you could tap, tap into those dollars as well. We discussed the sale of Eugene Field, as could be used to help offset the cost of this project. Now, the, the sale of Eugene Field, or I should say the sale of future properties, was one of the, was one of the debt service options that was shared with you at the time that you approved the full faith and credit loan for the district. And over the last two years, you've discussed sale of Eugene Field, you've also discussed a sale of, of a couple acres at Mark Twain. And nobody knows for certain what those two could generate, but anything above what was anticipated at the time for the sale of Eugene Field could also be applied to this project. The last two are not high on my list. In fact, those that I've shared with you are not in a, in a ranked order at all, but these two could be considered, but they wouldn't be considerations, or priority considerations for me. One of them is you could extend your credit for this project. I, I fully believe that you, you know, if, if the, the value of the project, or the expense of the project came in above a budgeted amount, you, you could secure additional credit to, to address those needs. And as a last option, and again, it's not one that I recommend, of course, you could take a look at funds in your, in your general fund as far as part of your two thousand and sixteen, seventeen budgeting process. So from my perspective, I, I believe you have multiple options to consider. Again, if the cost of this project truly does come in higher than you have budgeted, I believe it's too early to tell. Your estimators have given you their best information, but until you get your contract and see what some of the other results are related to this, this project, then I think it's, it's just too early to tell.
So right now, we're looking at a estimated project cost of three point two to three point five million?
No, the, the estimated cost would be two point eight to three million.
But the loan was for two point five, five million, and then we had half a million dollars in.
Correct.
Interest on top of that.
Yes.
So.
But you said, you asked for what the cost of the project would be, so the cost of the project.
The entire, the entire bill, okay.
Oh, if you talk about the full debt service over thirteen years, yeah, sure, there's interest on the debt for the loan.
Andy, you mentioned that we'd be approving a contract in our work session in January. I don't have the schedule in front of me, but is the timeline so critical that we can't wait till February regular meeting?
Uh, that's possible. I, I, I think we, the sooner we can get your contractor on board, the sooner this project gets going. But I can have that conversation with the architect and with Joel. I know that's been the, the, the original contract approval date was the January eleventh meeting, and so we've already had about a two week delay, and so that's where it landed on January twenty-fifth.
I just think we should try to avoid.
Sure.
Making decisions like that in work sessions when possible.
Absolutely. I'll look into that, won't we?
All right.
Other questions for Andy, on the Schleter project?
I do have two other items related to, that I'd like to share with you, and then of course, can answer any questions if folks do have. The, you do have a modular purchase contract on here for three hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. That, those modulators are two modulators from Federal Way, Washington, and two that are currently housed in, in Almsville. Joel Smallwood, especially Joel, but the two of us actually did a fair amount of work in, to find these modular units. They have a lot of life left in them. I've given you a summary document of, of what those two modulators can, can provide us. And they are being purchased through the Intermountain Educational Service District Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. And that is a, an agreement specific to that E S D, which allows school districts to tap into costs that in this case were established in two thousand and ten. So in other words, the E S D already did the procurement process for us in securing the best rates for units like this, and they've been used frequently. So we're members of that cooperative. We're also members of the, of the King County Purchasing Cooperative out of Washington, and we looked at their best options for purchase, and, and the closest was about a, about a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars more than this price. So we believe we found the, the best value for, for, for modulators that will serve our purpose very well for this project. And then finally, simply because I want to be certain that the public is, knows this information, was shared with you at the last meeting, also shared it with the Planning Commission when we presented there, that, that, that the large conifer trees, sequoia trees on James Street will have to be removed. Partially for this project, but actually prior to that, you know, I think that's all of you have seen, we've had some, some pretty badly damaged concrete and asphalt there. The city street has been damaged. We're very concerned about utilities in that area. We've had one recent accident that resulted in a pretty significant legal claim against the district, because somebody tripped over the concrete out there. We found roots in septic lines, and we're very concerned about those trees. Our insurance rates are going to go up if you keep those trees, and actually, in order to complete this project, those trees have to be removed. Even if we weren't completing those projects, this project, I'd be coming to you with a proposal to remove, remove those trees. They truly are a public safety hazard and not in the best interest of the district or of the public. Unfortunately, they're big, beautiful trees, but they have to go. And that's what I have to share.
Okay. Questions for Andy on any of this?
So, Andy, one nice thing on the, I'm looking at the proposal for the modular buildings, I think we had budgeted three hundred and forty thousand dollars.
That's correct.
So it's, it's good news to hear that we're about twenty-five thousand, almost under budget.
That's correct. We, we still have not secured the movement of our existing modulators though, Aaron, so we have three, three modulators yet to move.
Okay.
And so that price could be adder, or.
But so far.
We're getting quotes on, on movement to those.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Anything, any other questions? Okay, Steve, financial report.
Good evening. The statements in your packet are through November thirtieth. Everything's tracking nicely for the first five months, months of the year. We've actually received sixty percent of our general fund budgeted current resources and expended just over twenty-eight percent, which, which is actually normal because of the O D E front loads to state school fund payment in July a little bit. We received over half the state school fund money for the year, but the big news for November is that we've received ninety-three percent of our property tax revenue, so that November's the big month for property taxes. We'll receive the rest over the, the remaining portion of the year, so. Other than that, I think we're, we're on track, so.
Good. Questions for Steve? Okay. Kevin Palmer, Butte Creek.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm here to talk a little bit about Butte Creek for a few minutes. So far this year, we have three hundred and sixteen students in our school, which is down about thirteen from this exact time last year. Sounds like a lot, kind of a big drop, but three hundred and sixteen students is actually the second largest, I think, Butte Creek has ever been. So we lost a big group of eighth graders, brought in a smaller group of kinders, and, and that's going to happen. But three hundred and sixteen is still up there for Butte Creek. In the top half of this report, you'll see some of our new staff members this year, as well as some of the activities that have been going on this fall, such as open house, outdoor school, and we're glad to have had Victor Point join. Butte Creek, Scotts Mills, and Central Howell have been going together to outdoor school for a number of years, and Victor Point joined us this year as well. So that's growing, that trip to Camp West Wind on the Oregon coast. We also have our sixth annual Russian dinner coming up, so put that on your calendars. It was almost going to go away, but we had some great parent leaders step up at the last moment to commit to doing the Russian dinner this year. So that'll be just two weeks after we get back to school in January, right out there at Butte Creek, and that's the major fundraiser for Russian class, is the dinner. So come have some delicious Russian food. Drop down to academic programs, we were delighted to find out that because the legislature funded the Physical Education Expansion Grant again, that Butte Creek and Victor Point were able to apply for it again. We had gone through the two-year cycle, and we thought we were going to be on our own, but we're told by O D E that nope, if they're going to fund the grant, we could apply again. And so we did. So Butte Creek is in year three of the P E grant, which allows us to offer P E at or above the minimum required minutes for all kids, grades K eight, which is important as we get closer and closer to the P E mandate coming down. We're already there. Talking about attendance just a bit, last year, our school-wide attendance was lower than we wanted at ninety-three point five percent. But so far this year, we are solidly above ninety-five percent, and if you all want to take a look at the attached page stapled to the blue sheet, and this comes from Sandy Sprower, I'm responsible for tracking first month attendance across the district. And this is a nice spreadsheet Sandy put together. She emails me every month with the updated data throughout the year. And so you can see in black was the month last year, in red, the same month this year. So you can see the change by school and where attendance is going. Attendance for the district, all of our schools, ninety-six point three six percent for the month of September, and currently at ninety-five point nine four percent, so hanging pretty close. Cumulative through the fall, all the way through the end of November so far. And most every school, except for the high school, solidly above ninety-five percent attendance, all the way across the district. So that's for your information. Butte Creek Summer School, we were able to hold again this last summer in August for the fourth year out of the past five. We had thirty-six kids average per day and ninety-one percent attendance, which is really good in the summertime. That's a high percentage. Eighteen kids at our summer school with perfect attendance all three weeks. And later on this year, I will bring to you some data I've shown you before on the difference summer school makes between when a kid leaves school in the spring and when they come back again in the fall, without that loss of skills, the benefit of summer school for these kids. It's, it's amazing. Huge difference. Our P T T at Butte Creek, I want to thank them. They have, again, matched the, your generous funding at twenty-five dollars per student for devices. So Butte Creek's amount was eight thousand two hundred this year for student devices, and our parent club has matched that again. So eighty-two hundred on top of that, which allows us to continue to buy iPads for the primary grades and Chromebooks for our middle schoolers. And so as we get closer and closer to one-to-one devices. And finally, in the academic area, our third grade this year, you may have read Chris Thomas's article in the R-Town insert about our third graders hatching salmon eggs and raising them, taking care of them, and then releasing them on December second out into the Malala River. It was a long project, an excellent science and ecosystem project for our third graders. They could speak and write eloquently and technically about the project, and so their engagement was super high on this. And they let those two hundred small salmon free at a big event. We bust them down to the river and there they went. So we hope they're doing well. There's been a lot of discussion.
Yeah, I would imagine.
Where they might be. You talked to some third graders. We are a, a P B I S, Positive Behavior Support School, at Butte Creek, as well as several other schools in our district. And our, our P B S, our climate team directs virtually everything we do as a school. I wanted to mention a couple of things. Our Mentor for Success program currently serves thirty-four students under Counselor Debbie Scott's direction, and that provides Butte Creek kids with an adult mentor, either in the building or from the Abbey in Mount Angel. Some of the seminary students come each year and mentor students. It's very helpful and successful. And our holiday food baskets, a giving tree, will help twenty-two Butte Creek families this year with food and gifts. They're adopted by other families in our, our school to give them a nice holiday time. I did want to mention something else under climate though, and I'm not, I, I emailed this to Andy today. I'm not sure if it got out to you guys, but if it hasn't, you'll read it. We had a student just returned to school today after forty-two days in Legacy Manual Hospital, the Oregon Burn Center, an eighth grade student. Hospital, the Oregon Burn Center, an eighth grade student, and from, from an accident on their farm. And not a week has gone by, I think, that we haven't had Butte Creek staff members up there visiting. And on December second, a couple of our, our teachers, Carly First, our counselor, Debbie Scott, took eight kids up, got a minibus. The boys' bus driver, Jim Cosel, he drove the bus up, so he could say hello as well. And they, they actually took the kids up to the Oregon Burn Center and, and visited up there, did some activities with their classmate. And their, one of their directors up there sent me an email, which is what I had passed on to you guys. And, and we just thought it, it reflected well on the teachers and the students of our school in, in that this lady from, from the hospital says, "I've worked at Oregon Burn Center for thirty years, and your school is the first school that has ever made such a visit, having classmates come up to visit a student while in the hospital," which made an impact on us. Thirty years this person has been there, and she's never seen him before. And so I think the fact that we had staff that were willing to put together such a trip, kind of on a tight timeline, figure out the logistics around it, and students that wanted to go, visit and kind of walk for an hour in their classmates' shoes, who was there for forty-two days, made an impact on our students that they can then take back and, and share. And then those folks came down to Butte Creek today, as it was this boy's first day back in school on a partial day. They presented to our staff, and then they presented to the seventh and eighth grade classes as a whole, kind of what he's going through, the nature of burns, safety, et cetera. So a good experience, all in all, kind of coming out of this.
Great.
So. And that is all I have.
Great. Any questions for Kevin?
Just a quick question regarding the summer school. You said you'd bring some data back later.
Yeah.
Is that data just the beginning of school, of the school year, or is it towards the end of that school year?
So what it does is it, it, it shows, I don't know that I brought it to you guys last year, the year before for sure. Our Title One teacher, Libby Fosha, has these kids tracked, and it shows where their reading levels are when they leave us in the, in the spring, and then where they are when they come back in the fall when they're reassessed.
So I guess my question is, does that hold through, do they stay the same, do they progress just as like the other kids do throughout the school year, or do they drop off again?
If these, oh, during the school year?
During.
They progress during the school year, but the big difference is when you take three months off of school, these kids in particular during the summertime would drop off quite a bit if it weren't for the summer school. So for us, it shows the value.
So they, they, they stay up and they stay up?
They tend to during, once we get them in school, it's.
Sure.
They, they keep growing. But if it weren't for the summer school, they would regress.
Be behind.
Yeah, absolutely.
Other questions?
Well, I just noticed that you put a fence up, Kevin. How long ago did you do that? I might've been gone down south.
The fence in our courtyard between the two buildings? That was done last year.
Well, that tells you how often I get up that way. But it looks nice.
It does, and, and I wanna, I wanna thank you guys, I wanna thank Andy, because, you know, when we talked about that fence going up, if it were just the bear chain link, it wouldn't look as good. That part of the school's an aesthetic value to having that black powder coated fence out there. And we had comments coming back like, ah, we hear that fence is going in, 'cause we've talked about it for, for years, but never done it. Everybody's happy with it. And not only looks good, it keeps the school safer, and it serves another purpose as well. Middle school kids now, when they get into the main building off the buses, can just go straight down that sidewalk to the middle school. Without that fence there, they had to go back around through the playground, through the play shed, and back in the other door to the middle school. Had to travel twice as far just to put their stuff in their locker and then go back out to, to recess. With the fence there, they just walk straight across. So it saves time, supervision issues, it, it's better all the way around.
Good job. Looks good.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Kirsten Jorgensen, Scotts Mills. What'd you do to your boot?
Skateboarding.
Go skateboarding.
Skateboarding now, she trails.
That sounds good. On an icy morning.
She's one of my road testers.
Yeah. Test the roads for Nancy.
That explains it.
The story's not that great.
Three in the morning, down danger.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. I'm Kirsten Jorgensen, and reporting for Scotts Mills. So I had myself my, I had this done early, and I was really proud of myself, 'cause I was not finishing it before I came, and then I came up with more stuff to add to it. So I apologize, but lots of good stuff going on. We came, we had our Christmas program last Monday at the high school, so it was a great, that was, everything's my first at Scotts Mills right now. So the Christmas program was wonderful. Karen Ompust, of course, puts on an amazing program. Staff, Lisa Garrett was out there. We had a girl's reindeer bells get hooked to her dress, and they were, little first grader, and her dress was, it was too heavy. She couldn't stand up, 'cause these were hanging, and so Lisa Garrett was onstage, like, unhooking her, and staff was just a great part in making that happen, and our parents provided cookies. So multiple parents and families brought cookies to the program, and so afterwards, there was, everybody had cookies and punch, and it's just one of those things where we get to show up and it's taken care of because of our parents, so that was great. YMCA is putting on some basketball clinics at Scotts Mills in the gym. So we had one last week, and I'm not certain, I haven't talked to Brandon on how many kids came. We have another one this Thursday, who's trying to provide some opportunities for our students in Scotts Mills, so they don't have to come into the, I mean, into town. So we did a third through fifth grade and then a sixth through eighth grade clinic, just hour-long. Brandon Lemon, if you don't know Brandon, he's, he's an energizing guy. I said, "You wanna do this by yourself? You want me to get some help?" "No, I got it." So he's, he's doing a great job and working with us, and then also we're trying to get swim lessons going this spring for our third and fourth grade students. So I'm working on the koalas right now to see if they, they'll help support that for us and, and get that going for our third and fourth grade students. Another great thing, Scotts Mills, our community involvement, this Thursday morning from seven thirty to ten, if you need something fun to do, we have community coffee in our library. So every Thursday at, is it the Grange? Grange, is that right? Or Community Center?
Yeah, the Community Center.
Community Center. We have community coffee, and a lot of community members are there, and so we invited them to come to us, and so they're gonna come to Scotts Mills on Thursday. We have some of our students who are performing from the music program last week are gonna come and sing for the community members. So that's this Thursday morning, and, and that's been, and that's been great. We're hoping to kind of bridge some of the people who aren't, don't have kids in the community, but are big, strong community members and Scotts Mills supporters to, to help in the school. So we're excited for that. One of the greatest things I, is the community and parent support at Scotts Mills, right? I'm just, first, I think it was in August, our first event was a cleanup day. I was expecting a couple people. I didn't really know what to expect, and I think there was at least ten parents and numerous kids that were there spraying dark bark dust, pulling weeds and stuff, which was great. We even had, some of our parents had donated a bike to a second grade, a second grade student whose bike was stolen, and they had heard about it through the grapevine, so the parents went together and, and gave her a bike on that day, which was really neat. We had a chili feed this fall to help support outdoor school. I think it was about over two thousand dollars they made towards outdoor school, which is great. And they're still trying to raise money for outdoor school. I think they're selling smentels and smens, which I didn't know what that was, but they're pencils and pens that smell good. It's a new thing, smentels and smens. So if you want smentels and smens for Christmas, let me know. So, and then another thing about Scotts Mills that I, is just wonderful is the staff support. We've unfortunately had some staff members who've had some life circumstances that haven't been great this fall, and the staff just comes together. We had a family, a staff member with a family emergency, and before I could even think about sending out an email to do like meals for her, there was already a meal train set up, and there was like four days of meals set and ready to help the family. So people just step up and help each other out, which is great. It's really a family feel out there. So those are a couple more things I came up with, aside from what I'd already had down here. So also PBIS at Scotts Mills, it's, Scotts Mills has been a PBIS school, and we're just continuing to implement that this year. We're working really hard on consistent language and consistent expectations schoolwide. And so we've, Danielle Andrus, one of our teachers, is very creative and made some really great posters we have throughout the school. So, so kids are seeing those, and so when you remind them the rules, they're right there posted on the wall. So that's been helpful, and we say, "At Scotts Mills, we keep our hands to ourselves. At Scotts Mills, we," you know, that's kind of, we don't bite. That was one I had to practice today. And the thing, you know, with the middle school kids, we're like, everybody says that, you know, 'cause they, they keep hearing it, which is our goal. We want them to, you know, at Scotts Mills, this is where, you know, we, we, we keep our hands to ourselves and those things. And so that's, and that's been a good thing for us, and that consistency, and that's really helped like supervision on the playground, 'cause sometimes it's like, what do, you know, what are the rules? And not everybody's on the same page, and so we've really worked on getting that consistent straight across. One of the PBIS focus, we're rewarding great behavior, and so we have tomorrow, almost our entire school is going to the Beavers Beyond the Classroom Event at OSU, and so we're going down to watch a women's basketball game. All students who met the criteria for great behavior, which I think there's only maybe one or two that from each class that can't go, and some of them are because they just have homework to do and they'd rather stay home and stay back and get caught up. So almost our entire school goes, and OSU puts that on, and it's free to schools, so we just have to pay for our transportation. So it's completely driven for students, and it's really a neat, there's a whole educational packet we have to do and, and the kids do when they're there, and it's, it's a great thing. So we're doing that tomorrow. Great celebration for us is PE for every student every day. And we got also a PE grant from ODE, and Helen Plub is our PE teacher, which it's just been great to have. She sees every one of our students every day, which has been so energizing for the students and the staff. Helen, and this is even in a newsletter, so we can hold her to it, said it's revitalized her career, and she's tapping the energy of the younger students. She may teach till she's eighty. So we're gonna remind her of that. So that's been great. They're doing great stuff. She has some of the older kid, they've been golfing. She had a whole golf course set out with hula hoops. She's just really having, she's really, she's really doing, she's, it's, it's a great, it's great for her, it's great for our staff, it's great for our students. And then the staff are also thrilled. Lisa Garrett shared that she hasn't, this is the first year she hasn't taught PE in twenty-eight years. So, so it's been great. They have a real prep time, and the kids are getting lots of great exercise and letting out some excess energy. Kevin talked about outdoor school for fifth grade. Our fifth graders went this year. Kevin and I were down there for a day, and it was really great to see it. It's amazing where they go. It's beautiful. It's kind of like you, it's, you walk up on this hill and there's the ocean, and the kids are out there doing just really neat stuff. So that was, that was a, a great thing for our fifth graders, so you should come buy your smentels, so you can keep doing that. Run to Rio. So this, we're working on running to Rio as a school. So we are, this is Helen and PE, and the grant that she received, we're so far eleven hundred thirty miles towards Rio de Janeiro, and the goal is our whole school's gonna get to Rio for the Olympics. Right now, we, this was last week, so all but two students have reached the five-mile club, and twenty-five percent or more have reached a ten-mile club. So they run every day in PE. The first few minutes of PE, they're running, and they count their laps and they figure it out. So we also have Karen Ompust is creating songs and dance for each of the students. End of the year, we do a program, and each class is picking a country that they're gonna represent. We're gonna do a whole Olympic ceremony. It says torches, but we'll make sure they're safe. Maybe do it outside, and to make, make it a school-wide theme. And so it, that's from the Active Schools Grant that Helen got, and so we're getting to do, we've got medals for the kids, the, in the cafeteria, we have a whole display of a map where we are, showing how we're getting there. So it's neat, and the kids are all energized for that. Focusing on safety, Marion County Sheriff's been out to do a walkthrough, look at the building, give us some suggestions around safety. We participated in the Great Shakeout earthquake drill, and we have a lockdown drill scheduled in January. Robotics, we have seven students right now, one more is coming in after basketball season, and then our first through third grade programs beginning in February. And Skip Blamer coaches our older kids, and then Courtney Good, first through third, and they kind of combine efforts in February and do a session for the younger kids to participate in Lego robotics and get interested in that. Grants, in the last three weeks, we've earned forty-five hundred dollars in grants. That is, there's about four thousand of that is for PE, and then five hundred from Southco Community Credit Union, and that's Lisa Garrett expanding her Lego programming that she does with the first grade. So our staff is amazing. They, they wanna do stuff, they go looking for the grants, and that's been really great for us. So, and yes, some of the things we're focusing on, it's getting to be testing seasons here after the holidays, and so focusing on preparing students, preparing staff. Now that we know what SBAF looks like, we can, we'll feel comfortable going into it this year. Our January staff meeting is dedicated to looking at data, really looking at how we did, how, what we, things we wanna do to, to help prepare us and our students for the upcoming testing. Curriculum, focusing on the vertical alignment. You know, some, some years you may have a three-four blend, and then next year may be a four-five, or it could be just a straight four, and just the adjustment in the grade configuration, making sure students are getting all of the necessary curriculum that they need. And then working right now, our focus is some math instruction in the blended class. The last couple years, there was a specialist who worked with the math specifically, so they could be more straight grade, and, and so we're adjusting to how do we best focus our energy on making sure students are getting the math instruction that they, that they need. We've had great support from Kristy Sander, our instructional coach from the district in math. She's been really great supporting our teachers in that. Technology, our staff is dedicated to being one-to-one iPads at Scotts Mills and really focusing as a, as a whole staff on how can we be a great functioning school that's focused on technology. We have applied for collaboration grant funds, and so our entire staff is going to a conference for two days in February, where we're learning more about being a school-wide technology one-to-one. We have got some grants. We had a coin drive, and our coin drive, it was a Civil War coin drive. We were able to buy one more iPad. And in a social interaction I had this weekend, mentioned something about, we were talking about write-offs. I don't know, I need write-offs, and I said, "We're looking to buy iPads." And so we have seven iPad donation coming to us this week. So that was just exciting for us, and so we are about eight iPads away from being one-to-one at Scotts Mills. So we're really excited. And that's one through eight. Kindergarten, not quite. It's not quite, we're not quite there yet, but first through eighth grade, we're almost, almost to one-to-one iPads. So, and that's a lot of, a lot of years of a lot of work of our staff and community raising money for that. Our growth, we're growing. It's great. Since two thousand twelve, we were increase of thirty students. This year, our enrollment, we are one fifty-nine currently. Last year, October one, we were one forty-six. So our, our enrollment's increasing, and that's, that's great, but some growing pains come with, with increasing enrollment. Class sizes are large, but it's, but things are going really well. Our free and reduced population is also decreasing, so we are at fifty-two percent free and reduced, where in two thousand twelve, we were seventy-three percent. So that's just a, a change in our population. Thirty-nine students are transferring to Scotts Mills from other districts or other schools in our district, and we have thirty-six students in the Scotts Mills community that are transferring out. So that's, you know, pretty balanced there. We'd like to keep bringing them in, that would be great, and keeping the kids in Scotts Mills, at Scotts Mills is our goal. And right now, our, one of our biggest, I asked, asking staff, what's, you know, things we're focusing on is with our larger grow, larger, more students, we have the small indoor space for recess, and so we're trying to figure out, adjusting our schedule and how we can separate recess out, but also we're looking for grants for a covered play area, so, and Lowe's, we're looking at Lowe's right now for one of those. So, so that's Scotts Mills, and I'm also reporting on homeless. So currently, our district in Oregon, there's over twenty thousand students who are homeless as of the two thousand fourteen, fifteen data, ninety-six identified students in our district. So that's, you know, two and a half percent of our district enrollment. That is about average for our area. It's too many students, but we are working on some more training opportunities for our liaisons. Each school has a liaison for homeless, training those people and making sure we're appropriately identifying students, as well as providing them the, the things that they need for to live comfortably. So, that is a lot of information. Kind of fast, too, sorry.
Very good. Any questions for Kirsten?
Yeah, just one quick one. When the sheriff came out and took a look around the school, did he come up with anything significant that he thought you should be doing?
Um, yeah, we talked a little bit about our, you know, our fencing, making sure we have the door and, the door, the gate down by the gym, that we need to make sure it's remaining, you know, it's, and we were trying really hard to remember that, but a staff member leaves and they pull out and they forget, and so we're doing, we're working really hard on keeping that closed and locked. And. remaining, you know, it's, and we were trying really hard to remember that. But a staff member leaves and they pull out and they forget. And so we're doing, we're working really hard on keeping that closed and locked. And, you know, something little but big was we put all the numbers in the outsides of the windows, so we can see which, you know, windows. And in the back of, by the playground, there's trees. And so we were, you know, put them all in the same spot, and then discovered that you can't see them if you're looking. And so we had to move those. And that was something that they suggested. And we talked a lot about, you know, basically a lot of this stuff that we talked about beginning the year in the training that we did with the sheriffs and the Silverton Flyer Department. But they were, they're gonna, they're gonna come out for our lockdown, our lockdown drill and help with that and as well as Silverton. So we kind of have a combined efforts there to make sure we're practicing that appropriately.
Great.
Yeah.
Did you ever get the crash bar on the gate?
No, we have not. But I know Joel and I have been talking about it. So, and we did, yeah, Joel and I have been, it's not there, but we're hoping it's on, it's there soon.
Great.
And then I did, we have working with a sign company in town. I can't, Fast Signs, no. Paul. Anyway, we ordered some new signage that, some better kind of show where things are, where the gym is, where the restrooms are, and signs that have a little reflective tape on them, because it's really dark under our, in those hallways, and so people can kind of see. So, some more signage to kind of show people where to go and where things are in the main office and that sort of thing. But yeah, the crash bar.
Yeah. Kirsten, I'd like to comment about the business of the, there was a tax write-off, and you helped them out with that.
Yeah.
It might be a great suggestion just for schools in general, just to maybe send out just, you know, December and, and November, just to, you know, I, I've seen the, the, oh, there's fund me sites, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Just what your school can use, or any schools.
Yeah.
Just, and, and, you know, people, you know, businesses have good years sometimes, and they're looking for tax write-offs, and we can help them out with that.
Yeah, yeah. No, it was, it was kind of a random thing. I mean, I was kind of joking.
But as, as the business owner, it's nice to get that reminder sometimes. Oh, I can donate locally.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kirsten. Great report.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Any board reports tonight?
Yeah, I had a chance to go to the Marion County Board of Comer, Board of Commissioners meeting. I think it was last week at the Oregon Garden. And told them a few things about the district, and also had an opportunity to thank them about the, the new school zone sign up on Cascade Highway by Evergreen School, and also the one they're going to be putting in over by Bethany. And they're very receptive and happy to help.
Good, good.
Hey, when I, I see all the wonderful extracurricular activities we have in this district, I had a chance to, to attend one the, the last week, the fall production of Sabrina Fair by the drama team. I just want to kind of give my hats off to that, to Doug Osterhout, who's a teacher, and then Reagan Shiwi, who I believe is a senior, who is the, the actual director for the play. And I was more than impressed by these young men and women who, who did a fabulous job with Sabrina Fair. So in addition to, you know, our fabulous academics and our athletics, you know, the, the drama department has done a fabulous job, as they continue to do. So come out to the Spring Musical, I'd have to say. So looking forward to that.
And on the heels of that, Aaron, something else at the high school, the choir concert, the winter choir concert was excellent the other night. They did an awesome job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can think about that. So I got, I got a quick one. We, we were talking about security and tonight, and something, it, it reminded me of an incident back, back in October. I went and picked up, one of my daughters plays freshman basketball, and Tal has a morning workout. And he's invited, you know, any of the, any of the middle school girls. And my eighth grader wanted to go. And, and she's attended a couple of times. Anyway, I go to pick her up at the end, and I'm on my way to work, and I work in a fab shop, and I'm greasy, I'm scruffy, and I definitely don't belong there. And, and you know, I do, it looks like I stick out. And their practice, they were, they were nowhere to be seen. I couldn't find them. And I'm opening doors, looking for her, where's she at? And the security guys were all over me. And, and they were not taking, they, 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 they followed me around. I just saw, I'm just, I'm just looking for my daughter. And he's like, are you really? And he was, so they were, they did a good job. So I see Mark back there. So done a good job.
Good.
See what we can do.
Also, I had a chance to run up to Robert Frost for a couple hours, a couple weeks ago, and I left my notes at home naturally. But they're doing an awesome job up there. What a big change for that school. There's a lot of kids. With four grades, they have a lot of kids. But they've stepped up and they're making it work. I know it's been a, you know, I know they've had a lot of growing pains and a lot of changes and doing a lot of things differently. But, you know, hats off to Mrs. Roach, who jumped into a huge job. And, and the staff up there for, for stepping up and making that work for, for this one year. Jenny Matska was going on a cart around teaching health. I saw her in numerous classrooms, because she goes and does thirty minutes of health in every class. So the kids are getting that more often than they used to, which is a really good thing. She was teaching them about nutrition and some stuff like that. Some of the classes were, Mrs. Schaefer's class was doing some artwork and, which was really cool to see that they're, you know, making time for that, for the kids to do some of that stuff, too. And just a lot of really good things. Nothing real specific, just kids were engaged, you know, with technology. Kids were engaged with that stuff, and just in reading and math, and just, you know, just, again, good things happening up there. So thank you to them for, you know, stepping up and doing what they have to do to make that work for one year. So, anything else?
Well, when we was up at the school board convention, we was pleasantly surprised by the Silverton Wind Ensemble.
Good, yeah.
And they did an awesome job.
Yeah.
So it was, it felt good to have Silverton represent us up there.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks, sir. I forgot about that one. That was, they were really good. Did a really good job. Okay. Thank you, guys. Excellent. Correspondence, we had that email from Gene that I just sent around to everybody. So look at that. But other than that, I don't think there's anything. Is there? Second audience with visitors, would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Action items. First one, approved resolution number twelve dash fourteen dash two thousand fifteen, Scott's Mills adopting exemption from competitive bidding for the use of construction manager, general contractor for the seismic rehabilitation project at Scott's Mills School. Is there a motion?
Shall I move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just a big quick comment. I think Gene, Gene mentioned he felt it's better to do a design bid, build on these two projects. And normally, I would agree with him. I think these, we can define the, the scope very well. We should be able to package it in such a way where we could, could go that route. However, I think with the CMGC, in this case, since we've got a tight budget, I think there are opportunities to save money going CMGC because the risk shifts, shifts from the contractor to the school district. It's onus on us to keep the, the scope firm and not let it budge. But hopefully, we'll see some savings because of that.
Okay, thanks, Molly. Anything else?
I've, I've been a little bit apprehensive on that, only because when this has come up in discussion, people have talked to me about it, just in brief. They always start off with a joke of which board member has a brother-in-law that's in construction, or something like that. And, you know, although, you know, obviously, there's nothing, you know, dishonest or anything going on here. The fact that people are kind of joking about that and making that, makes me a little bit nervous. It's just kind of the, the perception that's going on. And so is there anything we can do to reassure people that, that if this goes through, that everything is, you know, that nothing hanky is going on or like that? So.
It's being bid.
Yeah, it's bid. It's, it's all out, up there and out front, and there's nothing, nothing behind the scenes.
Well, I realize that, but it's the perception, like I said, you know.
Yeah, well.
Ms. Chairman, if I can interject.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I, I think it's fair to say that this process still requires a statement of qualifications, request for qualifications that have to be submitted, and that those are submitted and actually scored before a, a final contract price is negotiated. The other piece is, and I think this is very fair to say, this district has an incredible, incredible record of fidelity when it comes to public procurement contracts. There has absolutely been no incidences of, of anything out of the ordinary or any difficulty related to securing a public contract. So in my mind, the best way to address the perception is for people to look at the facts. There's nothing in this school district, and I stand by that.
Thank you, Andy.
You bet.
And just to add to that, I, I had some discussion with Todd. And there is a lot of uneducated people when it comes to these type of bids. I would be glad to help answer any questions if they, you know, if you want to refer them to me, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Yep. Okay, we have a motion in seconded to approve this resolution twelve fourteen two thousand fifteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. Second one, approved resolution number twelve fourteen two thousand fifteen slash Butte Creek, adopting exemption from competitive bidding for the use of construction manager, general contractor for the seismic rehabilitation project at Butte Creek School. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Our third action item, approved resolution number twelve fourteen two thousand fifteen slash Eugene Field, declaring Eugene Field School as no longer, no longer required for school purposes effective December thirty-first two thousand sixteen. Is there a motion on this?
I'll move for approval.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Letter D, approved purchase and setup of four modular buildings for modern building systems of Almsville in the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and eighty-five cents. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, Andy, I thought when we had discussion, we were talking about two from Federal Way and then two from Almsville. Were they all through?
Yeah, yeah. Modern Building owns the two in Federal Way. They're currently on lease agreement.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll go ahead, Todd.
Being that we're looking at some cost overruns, I mean, you know, this project's happening. But it seems to me that we should at least figure out how we're going to pay for these cost overruns before we start spending the money. I mean, I realize, yeah, this is coming out of the two and a half million. But I, I just think it seems a little more responsible to figure out how we're going to pay for this and have that all done before we start spending all the money.
Well, we don't know what those are, if there are going to be. I mean, likely, there will be. We don't know that for sure, because there's the bend over bids.
No, and I understand, but, but we're looking at something. So I think we should have, you know, say, hey, the money is for sure going to come out of the capital funds project, or it is for sure going to come out of, I think we need to kind of dedicate that. To me, that seems to be the more responsible thing.
First of all, I think this fits within the three hundred and forty thousand dollars allocated to this. We're not overrunning already on that. And secondly, I think if we, if we put the brakes on everything, we're jeopardizing everything else behind it. And A, moving out of Eugene Field, and then B, what we're, we just approved to get in on the market and deming it as surplus property. I think we.
We're not putting the brakes on it. We're just, we're allocating money before.
Sure. Don't take it as I'm trying to fast-track. I'm just saying, we're, this is going to cause significant delay potential.
Well, and potentially cost more money.
It's never as expensive as it is right now.
I also know in my conversations with Joel and Andy, that it wasn't easy finding, finding modular, these modular buildings that, that we could use for this project. And if we don't get these, the cost is likely to go a fair amount higher, just to secure some other ones, if that's possible. So that's part of it, too.
Andy just gave us six ways that we could, you know, through grants and construction excise, and the balance we have in our fund, the sale of Eugene Field, extend the credit, use money from the general fund. So I mean.
Yeah, there's options.
Yeah, there's options.
Well, I think we need to pick them, though, because, you know, Eugene Field, there's already what, seven hundred and some thousand out of Eugene Field sale is going to go towards the, towards the debt. You know, and who knows when that might sell, sell anyway.
I think it's seven hundred and fifty thousand in total properties, if I'm not mistaken, right?
I'm sorry, Aaron?
On the, on the line item for debt service was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of combined sale of properties.
A future of properties.
Future sale, including Eugene Field, not just as a line item. Okay.
Anything else?
No, I, I, I guess, Todd, I'd be more to side with you if this was four hundred and fifteen or four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, I could understand the concern there, but I think we're well within the scope of what we had budgeted, three hundred and forty thousand. Now, we, we are, as we know, we're faced with some overages, and it's going to be our job to figure that out. But I, I, I think we have means by which we can do that. And we'll have to determine that. But I don't, I don't think we should do anything to delay it.
Well, I think we should allocate the money before we, before we start spending everything.
But, okay.
I realize that's coming out of the two and a half million.
No, I understand your point.
But we need to, we need to know how we're going to fully fund this entire.
Agreed. And I think we're going to be doing that over the next work session, the next board meetings, too. I think we also have to understand that, as Andy mentioned, there was other comparable modules that were found. There were a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifteen thousand more.
A hundred and five.
Hundred and five thousand dollars more than the ones we got. These are in fabulous shape. Again, not trying to push things on, but I, again, I think we're well within the budgeted amounts that we put forth on the original proposal.
This is the first step in saving some of that money.
Yeah.
Exactly. And, and we don't know, because there's some other setup fees, but we may be able to get out of this less than three hundred and forty thousand dollars allocated. Therefore, we can roll that into any of the overages. I agree with you. We need to figure this out kind of as the next step. But I think we do it in tandem with what we're doing to move forward in this project.
And once we have bids, so we know exactly where we are also.
I agree.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded to approve this. Is, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One aye. Did you get it? Okay. Okay. And the last one, consideration of a name for Slater Campus when used as the middle school. Is there a motion on this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we name the new school, Silverton Middle School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is Todd seconded?
Todd seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. With no other business, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good job.